Certain areas like Hebron and Nablus, there have been at least one Palestinian who was stabbed to death. I spoke to his family earlier. There's torching of homes, cars, and other property. And so far, at least 17 Palestinians in the West Bank have been killed since Saturday. That's according to the Ministry of Health.
Terrible. Tensions had already been there between the settlers and Palestinians in the West Bank. And as you say, it seems to have escalated. But we know Palestinians around the world don't speak in one voice about what's happened over this past weekend. But what's the view from the West Bank?
There's a lot of low morale because people don't want to see other people being hurt regardless of who they are. The attack by Hamas has been described as unprecedented, which is it is. But others say it's unprovoked. But if we look at the history, that suggests otherwise, because you have a litany of grievances and grim realities that are imposed by decades-old Israeli military occupation that continues to contribute to the daily violence afflicting Palestinians. It's not that this has happened in vacuum. Gaza, under siege, you know, is a pressure cooker. And so recent years have been marked by at least like five wars, killings in the West Bank, home demolitions, displacement of entire communities. So the pressure cooker eventually explodes.
Is there any anger at all at Hamas from Palestinians in the West Bank?
Yeah, there's anger. Of course, there's anger. There's anger at a lot of leaders. There's anger at Netanyahu, at Hamas, at the Palestinian Authority. But I think ultimately people realize that this did not happen in vacuum, and this is something that has been ongoing for decades. And at the end of the day, I think what people want is, yes, they want peace, they want justice, and they want a state of their own. And that's the kind of thing that you can only get when the occupation ends.
Well, meanwhile, Israeli Prime Minister Netanyahu said yesterday, what Israel will do to its enemies in Gaza in the coming days will reverberate with them for generations. And we know that there are several hundred thousand Israeli reservists at Israel's border. Is there fear of a ground invasion? And just in general, seeing what's happening in Gaza, the bombing, the devastation, how are people responding to that?
Yeah, people are really afraid, you know, their entire families that have been wiped out. People are afraid of a ground invasion. That's going to be horrendous, because if we look at past wars that have been waged in the Gaza Strip and between Hamas and/or Islamic Jihad and Israel, we've seen that it's absolutely devastating. I mean, we still see rubble from previous wars on the streets of Gaza. There's about 1,000 Israelis that have been killed. There's people who are still looking for their loved ones. There are people who have been taken hostage. The situation is devastating for everybody. There's fear and eerie sense of unease, and it's permeating every street, every alley, everything. And morale is low. And so we're just sitting here and, you know, I mean, in the West Bank, we're trying to see what happens, basically.
That's Dahlia Hatuka, a Palestinian-American, a journalist based in Ramallah in the West Bank. Thank you so much, Dahlia.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
You stay safe. An eerie sense of unease. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Robin Young.
And I'm Scott Tong. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from the Music Emporium, guitar sellers for more than 50 years, celebrating the enduring presence of music made on the front porch and center stage. You can learn more at themusicemporium.com.
So what this term is going to tell us is whether the Supreme Court, which has sent signals that it is receptive to cases brought by conservatives, may not be receptive to all cases brought by conservatives.
I'm Sabrina Tavernise. That's today on The Daily from The New York Times.
Join us for The Daily starting at 6:30 weekdays on Radio IQ. Support for programming on Radio IQ comes in part from Virginia 529, offering savings plans for adults seeking additional training or education. Learn more at virginia529.com.
The Cartober donation drive.
Pastor Stanley, if you would like to come forward and introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your church. And then after that, I will invite all who are willing to stand for the invocation and the pledge right after. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. My name is Chuck Stanley, and I am a pastor at Cave Spring Baptist Church. We're located over on Bramallton Avenue, right across from Cave Spring Middle School. At Cave Spring, we like to say we're a people changed by the gospel of Christ that seek to please God in all of life and promote the gospel to the ends of the earth. So we are grateful that we're located right here in Cave Spring. We really seek to be a good neighbor to schools and areas. We are grateful for our area that we can worship here and live here. And we do have services on Sunday mornings at 8:30 and 11:00 with a Bible study in between the two. So would welcome anybody that would like to join us. Would love to have you as our guest. So yeah, thank you all for your service. I know you guys often have difficult things to consider and decisions to make. So I'm honored to be here today and pray for you. So I'm happy to pray when you're ready for me to do that.
Let's stand.
Yeah, let us pray. Yeah, Father God, we thank you for this day that you've given us today. We thank you that as we have a day, we are reminded of your step you give us. We're reminded of just this beautiful area that we live here in Roanoke Valley that we call home. Father God, thank you for these blessings in our life. Thank you for these servants of the community. We just pray for them this afternoon. Father God, I pray that you would give wisdom. I pray that you give peace. I pray that you give discernment. I pray that you give them clarity. I pray that you would help them to listen well and to communicate well with each other, and that you'll just give them clarity and faculties to make wise decisions that are good for this community and ultimately honor you and glorify you. Father God, thank you for our day today. Thank you for Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for October 10th, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanockcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A is opening ceremonies. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda item. Are there any changes, board members?
No.
Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Lubek?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Item C, new business resolution approving a comprehensive agreement between the county and G&amp;H Contracting Incorporated regarding construction services for the Bonzac Fire Station. Mr. Peter Lubek, County Attorney, George Acid, Capital Projects Administrator. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. As the board is aware, county staff last fall solicited proposals for the construction of a new Bonzac Fire Station, which will be located at 1465 Mexico Way Northeast in the city of Roanoke. The proposals were solicited pursuant to Virginia's Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2022, which we refer to as the PPEA. The county received proposals, and through the process of competitive negotiation, staff selected G&amp;H Construction as the vendor to construct this facility. Although the original proposal submitted by G&amp;H contained extensive information, it was still necessary to refine the design and obtain necessary permits before beginning actual construction of the facility. Accordingly, on February 28th of 2023, the board approved an interim agreement with G&amp;H regarding preconstruction services, which included, among other things, design of the site and of the buildings. G&amp;H has concluded their preconstruction services, and county staff and G&amp;H have now negotiated a comprehensive agreement for the construction of the Bonzac Fire Station. Pursuant to Roanoke County's PPEA guidelines, the Board of Supervisors must also approve this agreement. Mr. George Acid, who is here with me, has expertly championed this project, and he has prepared a brief presentation to share with you today. And it's my pleasure to turn over the microphone to him.
Okay. Sorry, there's no pretty pictures anyway. All right. So I just wanted to run through what the, what we're asking you to vote on today. We're going to look at what's in the comprehensive agreement, what is a guaranteed maximum price, talk a little bit about the solar array system, and our next steps. All right. So what is the comprehensive agreement, or what's in it? We have the general conditions to the contract, the supplementary conditions to the contract, construction documents, additional scope of the construction documents, which came from the 99% pricing set that G&amp;H did the initial pricing on to develop the GMP. So there were some tweaks within that month or so time period. And that got us to what is the guaranteed maximum price. We'll take a look at that, and then the project schedule. The guaranteed maximum price, what is it? It is the contract price. And it represents a total compensation payable to the PPA contractor for performing the work. The PPEA contractor is responsible for any cost overruns beyond the GMP unless there are changes to the project design or scope initiated by the county. So what's included in the GMP? The hard costs associated with the construction of Station 12 where the Bonzac Fire Station, the A&E construction administration fees, contractor-provided fixtures and equipment, utility connection fees, utility construction and improvements within Mexico Way, permit fees, signal preemption infrastructure, and rock and unsuitable soils contingency. What is not included in the GMP? So it's our owner-provided furniture fixtures and equipment, our technology and low voltage systems, security cameras, secure building access, station alerting system, third-party inspections, and the solar array. So at the guaranteed maximum, the project was funded for $10 million, 325,000. We've spent close to $1 million to this date, which includes the purchase of the property. The total GMP is at $8 million, 12,308. We have an estimate on the solar array. If we were to have to provide out-of-pocket expenses, complete 100% is $354,000. And then other soft costs mentioned before, like for anything that wasn't included, we're in the 320-plus or minus range for that, with the estimated total project cost of $8 million, 686,000. And we have a project contingency around $670,000. All right. So the solar array system, why isn't it included? Well, a couple of things we want to do. We want to avoid subcontractor and contractor markups. They can be substantial. We want to take full advantage of the federal tax credits and the solar renewable energy credits, which are the, you'll hear me refer to them as S-Rex. Receive, we receive, want to receive differing solutions and various costs from multiple vendors. Now, as part of the solar array system, we did include infrastructure for that solar array to connect to it. So we have some of that already built in to G&amp;H's contract. All right. So what's the plan for the solar array implementation? We will, we want to solicit proposals on this through an RFP process. We want to do that for, we'll do it for both the Bonzac Station as well as the Parks Recreation Administration offices. We'll review the options for solar system ownership, whether it's county or purchase-power agreement. The initial, we want to look at the initial capital outlay, the operational costs, and any maintenance costs over and above what the operation costs will be. You know, we have to look at whether we want to use a broker to sell the S-Rex or sell the S-Rex to the solar contractor for a lump sum, which we already know we're not going to get the best value for. And that's one of the other reasons we want to select a solar system vendor that does provide the best value to the county. So what are our next steps? Today, hopefully, we'll, the board will approve the comprehensive agreement. We are looking at an anticipated groundbreaking in early December, hopefully be the first snowfall, because apparently that's coming. And we're looking at anticipated substantial completion in late 2024, and then the station opening early 2025. If you have any questions, Troy Henderson with G&amp;H Contracting is here. He was looking forward to getting buried with some questions.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Acid, does the county have someone already in line to perform the third-party inspections?
We do. Well, we have their proposal. We haven't issued the purchase order until after this contract is signed.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Radford?
George, did, when y'all are working on the solar array and that, did you do a, is there a cost-benefit analysis done on how much you need, you know, kilowatts and so on and so forth?
I'm sorry, the last part?
The kilowatts.
We have, we have that information based on, and so we have a solar contractor that made a proposal to G&amp;H. They looked at the facility and said, we think it's going to be this much, we're going to need this many kilowatts for to run the facility. They did come back to us and say, you know, that's our best guess, because we don't want to go over, you know, we don't want to provide more solar array than what's needed for electrical. But at the same time, they, you know, they, they're being cautious, because they don't have the annual usage rates, you know. And I mean, if we want to maximize it, then we would wait a year or so. But I don't, I don't think that's, I think they know what they're doing. They'll, they're all going to be pretty close to each other, because we had, we did give them comparables with other fire stations that we have.
Okay. So we don't know if it's going to be a net zero structure yet?
It likely will not be. And the biggest thing is, there's, even if we were to do 100% electrical, there's still a fee when you pay electric bill. And what we found out, too, is that with, even if we, if we were to go over and the meter starts running backwards, we had, they, you know, ATCO will buy those from you, but they buy at like, I'm just using numbers, one cent, they're going to sell it back to you for two.
Right.
So there's, there's some interest in, you know, we need to make sure we don't go over the size of it.
Yeah, okay.
And it is, since it is a 24/7 facility, we have to have electricity at night, and the solar arrays are not producing any.
Right, right. And I'm looking at the, the building plans, and I'm sure it's got a generator in the, in the budget?
It does, yes.
Okay. I just didn't see it on, on one page I was looking at. I just wanted to make sure. And it's got the commercial washer, dryer, equipment in there to do its own?
It does.
Clean the gear? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And last time, we talked about the ventilation system. That'll all be built in?
Everything, yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, if it was, if it's connected, hard-connected to the building, it's the contractor's responsibility. If it's like a refrigerator where you just, those are going to be owners-provided, contractor-installed. But we, we switched a few things around between the interim agreement and the comprehensive agreement. We did, we did send or give all the hard-connected equipment to the contractor, and that includes everything that you've mentioned.
Okay. And then the, the PPEA in terms of the warranty, is it still just a year warranty?
Right. It's just like a general construction contract.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
And Mr. Radford, I might briefly add with respect to the solar, and George, you can expand on this if you'd like, but the infrastructure to support the solar is part of the comprehensive agreement. So you're not going to have to go in and do rework to the building. They'll just be essentially added to the roof and all of the conduit and wiring and everything that you need to support that as part of, of that work that G&amp;H will be doing. So we don't have to undo anything that we would have just completed.
That, that piece is absolutely correct. There, what we've been unable to determine, even with the, the proposal that G&amp;H received, is whether or not there, there is additional conduit that's needed on the roof.
Right.
Which we wouldn't put in. But everything else that connects to is part of the project. And these will be clipped to the metal roof. These are going to be, have that clipped connection.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Peters?
So George, back in the day, we were all, we were so consumed with a LEED building, where it met that qualification or whatever. Do we build to that standard anymore? Is that just something that was here, you know, was here 10 years ago, and now everybody ignores it now?
We, well, I don't want to say everybody ignores it. We do not build to that standard. When LEED was, first came out, the building codes were much more lax than they are today. With the energy codes and whatnot, we now, and even just the general building code, we meet many of the requirements for LEED certification.
I just know it was such a big conversation, you know, with the Venn Library and different things we've built through the years, and then just never heard about it anymore. So I wasn't sure how that all played out. Thank you.
No, Mr. North has a comment.
This has been an odyssey from the, from the idea to the land acquisition, to the, working with the city on the resoning to this thorough plan that you presented. Mr. Radford Stone, my only question was, and I knew the answer before I asked it, was about the generator. Even though you're talking about solar, you got to have the generator, because those winter days are a little longer than the late days of summer. I just want to thank you and staff for everything you've done on this. Mr. Kaywood's sitting over there in modest view at this time, but he and I first gleaned that an opportunity and set up the meeting to purchase the land with the church. I even had a citizen ask me Monday, hey, you know, when is this fire station you've been talking about ever going to come? Is it ever going to get built? And I said, yeah, it's going to get built by the end of next year. So that was a timely question for this. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to move the motion, item C1, that we adopt the resolution.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Acid. Mr. Henderson, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Item D, first reading of ordinances, ordinance approving a permanent easement to the city of Roanoke on property owned by the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, Roanoke County Tax Map Number 060.11-04-17.00-0000, for the purpose of constructing and maintaining the city of Roanoke's Glade Creek Stream Restoration Project. Lindsay Webb, Parks Planning and Development Manager, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you today. The city of Roanoke is proposing to construct a stream restoration project along Glade Creek that will extend about 1,500 feet downstream of Gustonix Boulevard or Washington Avenue in the town of Benton, in order to lower sediment discharges and stabilize stream banks and enhance aquatic habitats. A portion of the project is proposed to be constructed on property owned by the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors that's located in the town of Benton that also is known as Glade Creek Park. The park currently has the Glade Creek Greenway through donated easements from the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors to the town of Benton in 2016 and 2019. The property also has a trailhead parking lot, athletic fields, and the bus garage and a parking area for Roanoke County School System. This project is a design-build project that's been designed by STAN Tech, and it is partially being funded by the city of Roanoke through our Virginia Stormwater Local Assistance Fund Program. The city of Roanoke is requesting a variable width permanent easement on this property that will enable construction and future maintenance of the Glade Creek Stream Restoration Project. A deed of easement is prepared and by the city attorneys, has been reviewed by our county attorneys in coordination with the town of Benton. That is included in your board packet, as well as an easement plaque that is prepared by the city's consultants. As a reminder, you approved an MOU recently that was brought before you at the end of June, authorizing the county to act as the VSMP, an Erosion and Sediment Control Authority, allowing the city to service that on this project. Construction is anticipated to begin later this year in November, with completion next spring or early summer. There are no impacts anticipated to Glade Creek Park. We have coordinated very heavily with the city of Roanoke, and they will have staging and construction access from the west side of Glade Creek, so they will not be coming through the park for any staging or construction access. They also have detours planned to go through the neighborhoods, because they will have a closure of some of those roads in Roanoke City. There are no fiscal impacts anticipated by the county of Roanoke for this easement request, and our staff are recommending approval of this ordinance and scheduling the second reading for later this month on October 24th. In closing, I'm happy to take any questions or any comments you all may have. I'm also served behind me with a team of county staff that have been very helpful in evaluating this request and coordinated with the city of Roanoke. So we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Any questions for staff? Any questions? So is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for October 24th, 2023?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item D1 for the first reading and schedule the second reading for October 24th.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item E, public hearing and second reading of ordinances, ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of cable television franchise agreement by and between the county of Roanoke and Shenandoah Cable Television LLC. Mr. Lubek?
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. And before the board today is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving a cable franchise agreement with Shenandoah Cable Television LLC, as we know as Chantel. And as discussed at the board's meeting on September 26, pursuant to Title VI of the Federal Communications Act of 1934, cable television operators must have a cable franchise agreement with the locality before doing business in the locality. During the first reading of this ordinance, when reviewing some of the benefits to the county of having such a franchise agreement, members of the board asked specifically about support that Chantel has agreed to provide to Roanoke Valley Television or RV TV. And in addition to broadcasting RV TV signal on one of their channels free of charge, Chantel has agreed to make a one-time donation of $5,000 to RV TV. While this commitment was not included in the franchise agreement, the parties felt that because RV TV was not a party, they preferred to have this not included in the written agreement. But since the board's last meeting, they have memorialized this commitment in a letter. This letter was included in the board's information packet for this hearing. At this time, I would be happy to answer any other questions that you might have regarding the agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Lubek?
Tell them to make it $10,000. We got a deal. Well, I really am glad to see they are contributing to RV TV, because it is something very valued to our citizens. And so I am glad to see them make that contribution to them.
Any other comments?
No, just thank you for getting that information back to us. As Mr. Peters indicates, RV TV still seems to have a tremendous amount of viewership in the Roanoke Valley. I'm always amazed. I'm always amazed when people talk to me and they say they watched the entire meeting. I'm always amazed. So, thank you.
Hopefully that's not, it's not at night when they're trying to go to sleep.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Radford?
Go ahead, Phil.
Hi, you.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure the county residents now have the choice between Cox and Chantel for cable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anywhere in the county?
No, not, not anywhere in the county. So attached to the materials were distribution maps. There were circles that showed the areas.
I knew that, I was just, I was testing you.
[laughing]
Let the citizens know there is certain locations.
No, that is correct.
If I, if I may, I think the clarification that it, that is good to get out to the citizens is if you've had glow fiber come through your yard and mess up your yard in your street, here's the additional benefit that you're going to have from that.
Yes, sir.
For those specific areas.
Right, for those areas.
So the glow fiber is the internet, the broadband?
Right.
And the Chantel is the cable side. So they're married together in that yard that they went through. Okay.
Mr. Norworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's not going to be any more digging in Roanoke County for this service, correct?
Ooh, not to provide this service at addresses where they have already digged. I confess, I do not know of their future plan, expansion plans, if there will be future digging in other sites.
If glow fiber has come through a neighborhood today, they don't need to come back for this service.
Correct.
That's what I want to make clear. But if they haven't touched the neighborhood and someone wants the service, that's a different story.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want the citizens to hear that. That's my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So at this time, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was there anyone that signed up for this petition?
I have no one signed up.
So I'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Are there any further questions from the board before we proceed? I'll ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Madam Chair, I move the motion E1.
And is there a second?
Second.
And so would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Item F is appointments. Are there any board members that have an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk? It has a listing there of any that may need to be filled. If not, we'll move on to item G with the consent agenda. I'm getting funny looks on that one. Is there any board member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item H is citizens' comments and communications. Again, Madam Clerk, is there anyone that has signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, item I, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Some moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item J, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney?
Pass.
Mr. Radford?
Have none.
Mr. Peters?
Well, you're not going to get away with that from me today.
I was trying to set a record.
Oh, that record was set a long time ago, like 20 minutes. We're, we're way over. Couple of things I, I would like to address. First is, as Mr. Nor said earlier, this has been a long journey for the fire station. You know, back in the day, I think Roanoke County entered into a, a deal that was not to our benefit to build Station 12 in Bonnet Tot County. And we got evicted from there. And I think that is, it was a disservice to the citizens in Bon Sac. So I know this has been a, a big ordeal to get this done. I want to thank Chief Griffith for helping us get to this point. I know it's been a lot of time and energy put into this, to George for his help, for Richard, for everyone who's had a hand in this. I mean, this is, this is something that is going to be a great benefit to our citizens in the Bon Sac area. But it's also, as I'm more familiar with the Vinton Station, it's going to take a lot of stress off the other stations that are having to now run to, to that area. It's extended call times and that, that's not a good thing. We, we have, we have kind of set the precedence in Roanoke County of having people on a scene within a certain period of time. And I think we have felt, you know, we have fallen from that a little bit over in the Bon Sac area. So I'm, you know, I was not a fan of putting it in the city, still not a big fan. But at the end of the day, the, the response to our citizens is more important than the ground it sits on. I almost, I do want to say kudos again to everybody who had a, a dealing with the Wells Fargo announcement two weeks ago. I am still getting people daily talking about that. So I mean, so again, I still want to thank everybody that was involved in that. I think it was a great win for Roanoke County. This past weekend, we had our Vinton Fall Festival and what a great turnout it was. I want to especially thank the executive director of the Vinton Chamber and the assistant, Angie Tuning and Catherine, Catherine Sowers, who worked tirelessly to make that a huge success for that day. But I, I don't know the number, but I can tell you that it was probably the largest turnout I've ever seen. So, but anyway, I know those two ladies were wore out at the end of the day. They had a mingle at the market that night afterwards and how they did it is beyond me. And the last thing that I have is remind our citizens that early voting is going on right now, is going on both at the Chestnut Street Event, area, location, facility over in Vinton, and also here at the Brownlow Center, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm done.
Mr. Norworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Comment on the fire station. I'd like to ask staff to report to the board on the status of the current agreement with our neighboring county insofar as when that comes up for renewal. In, in light of our construction schedule, I want to make sure that there's some buffer, if you will. So if you could find that out and let us know, we'd appreciate it. I know it was a five-year agreement with options to renew. At this time, I want to share something. I'm on the 81 Commission and so we met up in Lexington and I want to share just some of the slides for you folks at home, but also for folks here today. There were two presenters. The first one was Dave Covington, engineer and VDOT I-81 Program Delivery Director. Next slide, we go to project development process. If you look at the bottom of the screen, it shows you what was going on July of '22 when we had our last meeting on the 64 projects up and down the corridor. As you can see, 15 were under construction at that time. And now at the top of the slide, you'll see six projects under construction. Also, 18 projects are in design phase now, whereas before, some 15 months, months ago, there was only 11 projects. So things are moving quite well along the way to improve 81. Next slide, please. This is the Salem District, which encompasses our district. There's some completed projects. One closed by has been the Troutville Restory Extension to handle the trucks. Also, three curb improvements south of Draper and south of Natural Bridge have been completed. The project that we all know is under consideration, construction now, is Exit 137 to 141 widening northbound and southbound in design build. Two projects were bundled together. When you bundle those projects in north and southbound, you save a lot of money, almost 70 million in some cases. The Salem District is approximately 50% complete with respect to that project with completion set in January 2026. By the way, the most concerned throughout the meeting was the high cost of 34 to 35 million dollars a mile. So if you're doing northbound and southbound, you go ahead and figure that 70 million a mile for those parallel routes. Next slide, please. This is the I-81 Corridor Finance Update from Laura Farmer, Chief Financial Officer at VDOT. What a thorough job she did. Next slide. Particular chapters 1230 and 1275 of the House Bill 1414 in the 2020 session authorize the sale and issuance of bonds with an aggregate principal amount of one, not to exceed $1 billion. That changed localities contributing to fuel tax revenue for I-81 funding to those which pass, through which 81 passes, or cities wholly encompassed by a county through which I-81 passes, and also revenues provided and allocated funding from the federal Interstate Operations and Enhancement Program. So those are your three buckets of funds that fund the 81 construction projects. More on the fuel tax in just a moment. Next slide, please. Dedicated funding for the I-81 corridor is deposited from the regional fuels tax and the share of the statewide revenues from allocation of the Interstate and Operations Enhancement Program. The regional fuels tax is 8.8 cents effective on July 1 of 2023 per gallon of gasoline. So if you buy your gas anywhere near the territory, that's what you expect to pay over what you probably would pay otherwise in the state. And they use that revenue to leverage debt service and pay as you go in the future years. Also, the allocation from the Interstate and Operations Enhancement Program, the calculation there is made by the ratio of vehicle miles traveled on 81 by vehicles class six or higher to the total VMT of all interstate highways. And so that helps fund I-81 as well. Next slide, please. This is just a chart that shows you the regional fuels tax for the next five or six years and the other categories as well. If you'll note in there, planned debt for construction starts in '04, skips a year and goes to '26 and '27, and it's somewhere around the $250 million range, roughly speaking. That's largely money from the federal government, TIFI loans. Next slide, please. That, those TIFI loans are about 2.5% interest, which is a pretty good deal. And so that's how we are able to fund a lot of the construction on 81. The TIFI program allows VDOT to advance projects with the use of debt financing and usually the repayment terms like 35 years. So it's not just one revenue stream to fund this construction, it's made up of at least three. Next slide, please. This shows you the current 81, $3.1 billion fully funded program, which is a mix of the federal money and fuels tax pay-as-you-go dollars. It, we look to be in pretty good shape, but again, the threat of inflationary cost hang over us every day. And hopefully, we can get these projects complete through 2033 that are on the calendar. The interesting thing is that there's nearly 1.8 billion in additional project costs that can be supported through FY 2040. In 2034, there's about five or six other projects you'll see in a moment that we need to tackle and a couple of them are in our district. The corridor plan originally identified 106 projects, but it was narrowed down to 64 projects that were prioritized. We will never have, under this scenario, three lanes up and down from one end of the state to the other end and back. It's just not feasible at this time. But what I found interesting when I drove through Maryland the other day and coming from Baltimore is it was three lanes in each direction on Interstate 70 as best I can remember, which was one of the first times I've driven that road. Very impressive. Additional projects from this list could be amended if the, if the department is positioned to add projects to the six-year improvement plans as revenues support them. I will say this, $150 million was removed after the House and Senate considered it in the budget during the budget reconciliation. It was put on the I-64 East of Richmond Plan. And so when I asked Secretary Shep Miller of Transportation, if we want to get that money back, the reply I got was the governor supports the I-81 efforts. It wasn't a yes and it wasn't a no. So it was, it was the answer you'd expect to get, but it needed to be asked. Five additional projects were identified beyond the 64 prioritized projects. And these are probably the most complex and highest risk segments and remaining capital projects from the corridor plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Additional projects, there are about five here, three in the Stanton District, two in the Salem District. The southbound widening between Exits 137 and 128 ranged from 246 million to 308 million dollars. These are millions that are provided as uninflated 2022 dollars, which means the costs are simply going to go up if it, if it happens beyond 2033. There's also the northbound and southbound realignment of the S-curves in Bonnet Tot County. At the end of the day, I asked the question, why would you not do the southbound widening Exit 137 and 128 in concert with the engineering plans for the northbound side? And no one could give a, a good answer other than the fact that it would probably be scored at smart scale but not high enough to get the money. We know that because we tried to do that this past year and we did not make that happen. But here's the interesting thing. You can save 70 million dollars if you do it today. And so with that said, that if you needed 150 million more dollars to do it, it really would only net you cost 80 million because you're going to save 70 million if you do it later on. So that's all I have on I-81. And now you can say you've been updated through 2023. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, please.
So was there any, any information given on, you know, we're, we're using the fuel tax to fund a lot of this now, but now we have to push for electric cars in 2035 or whatever it is, they're going to be all electric? How, how is that going to be addressed as we move forward if we're using it as a revenue stream?
Didn't seem to bother, well, I asked, I asked that question and they weren't concerned about it at all impacting these numbers before 2033 on the initial 64 projects.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay. So I just have a couple of things to mention, them being, today we had a really great day at Carillion, at Tanglewood. It was a great day opening the mental health department. It was quite the crowd there. I'm not sure I've seen a crowd like that at one of those ribbon cuttings before. And the really great thing, I know some of our information said about 800 people weekly would be coming through as patients. When I talked to an individual familiar with the project, he was estimating about 1,000 people per week. And there are over 600 employees in that facility now. So this is really just a, a great day for economic development and for this corridor of Roanoke County. And it's really exciting. It isn't just a great day for the patients that will be served in this locality, but it's also a great day for all the secondary restaurants and people who will want to be coming to our area and living in this, in this corridor. So it was really, was a pure pleasure to be able to be there. Last night, I was at a Mason's Cove Civic League Forum and it was a great turnout from our community there. Mr. Peters was there also and there was a lot of good information that was shared with the citizens. So on that note, I think it is appropriate if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. We are adjourned.